Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And we do not have any registered speakers, so anyone here who would wish to speak can approach the podium. You will have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. It's at the top of the hill on Beffer. Today, my grandbaby, who's 11 years old, no, she's 12 today, I'm sorry, her name is Nichelle Brown. Now, I have been taught, and I know you've probably heard, that they say, if you bring up a child in a certain way, this child will continue it on. Well, she came home and she was kind of upset, and she had her, oh, I have her little paper, and she was saying, "Grandmammy," she says, "Mr. Duckett has the boys, they're all honor guards," and she says, "There's no girls," and she says, "Grandma, they're mean, disrespectful," and so on, she was saying. So she says that she took and went to the kids, and I'm sorry, I put the paper back there, but it's a paper, and she has all these yeses. She had a question, "Do you think it's fair that no girls are honor guards?" And so you had all these, and should we question it? And they had all these yeses, like 39 or more, and I said, "Yes, you got all these yeses." The kids agree. I said, "Well, what's their names?" Well, she didn't know that she had to put their names. She said, "They know their names. They know their yeses." I said, "But we don't." So anyway, this baby is 12 years old. I'm not going to be here that much longer, I don't think. I'm getting up in age, and I know it, but you better watch out because you got a 12-year-old that was saying, "Now, what else can we fight for?" So she'll be down when I won't. Okay, now that's one thing. Then today, I was walking down the hill. I walk, because the buses, our buses don't run that well, and I'm walking, and someone in the car hauls out, "Ms. Brown, sock it to them. You tell them off," and so, and I look, she said, "We love you." And I remember, walking down, I smiled to myself. I was so happy, but then my hands got cold again. But I'm telling you, I'm coming down because I want you to understand that you should listen to the people. If you listen to all that war over there, you hear them talking. Come talk to us. You have mothers, the same way I feel about my son, and she was saying about her son. She just wanted to know if he's all right. I want you to understand that I come down, I can't bring my son back. I know what he's suffered through, and I want to make sure another mother or a person don't have to go through what I do, when I'm thinking about how my son was begging for his life. I also wanted to tell you, I come down and talk about that female up in our building, Mr. Lavelle, she was up there yesterday, knocking on a senior citizen's door, banging, 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 and he says, "No," he wasn't letting her in. So she says, "I'm calling the police," and he hollers, "Call the police," when they come, but they won't take a report. You must see that. You go talk about having meetings, they won't take reports.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Pittsburgh. My name is Howard H. P. Jackson, Black Political Empowerment Project. I grew up with NAACP all my life in Pittsburgh. Yeah, I'm blessed that we granted a February for Black History Month, but Black History is every day. You know what? We need to go ahead and unite the education system. It's been segregated so long, you know, you remember that fellow Thurgood Marshall, you know, and his mentor, Charles Houston? They advocate to get rid of segregation, okay? And we still got segregation in the education. Our babies is brought up with Santa Claus and Valentines and Easter bunnies, you know, while they're babies, all right, but they don't know the truth about the education system. They've been lied to like I have and you have with Columbus, never stepped a foot in America, and we got fantasized and programmed with segregation, you know. It's the format that, like how we've been brought up as a child, and how are we going to go ahead and seek the truth and have respect from our children? Now, this year is 2025. Now, if you want to go ahead with the struggles of the 200 years, now, 250 years is a couple of years away, okay, to celebrate the unity of this country and the fabric of it. And it's time to go ahead and advocate, to tell our babies the truth while they're younger. You know, Japan has the best education system in the world. You know, they don't start to learn and be educated until they're about like in the third or fourth grade, and you know what their fundamentals are? Discipline, how to clean. Look, they clean their own schools, and we got janitors to clean our schools. But let's get back to the basics on how we done raised our, how we've been raised in America, all right? I witnessed the change of moderation when Eisenhower was in office. You know, Truman tried to, you know, come in and stop the segregation on how they modernize, building bridges and dams. Do you know there's 200 cities that black progress has been drowned by dams and lakes and flood by handmade America today? And all they do is advocate Tasa and Wilmington about the stock market, about the abuse of what they already done. Do you know they abuse African-Americans all over the country? All over the country, and buried it, and now it's out. It is 2025? Now, we have to go ahead and get our educators and advocate and find the fundamentals to unite the system, to unite American education, American education. Now, I hope that, like, look, I gave you an idea. I don't care who runs with it, but you know the truth. Now, how are you going to seek the truth?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Special Agent Sunshine. I return to send Ernie Voodoo Hex's curses, death rituals sent towards me daily, 100 million billion trillion googolex, and whoever's sending it, Lord, throw them into a lake of fire. Now, if you think God don't hear my prayer, you better look at California, because it's on fire, and I don't care if you don't see it or believe it, but it is. Yesterday, I talked about pestilence, a fatal epidemic disease. Wow. Plague, an instrument of God's wrath, a punishment for unrighteousness. Lavelle, Lavelle, Lavelle. Here's motive for you wanting me dead. You had a sex change. You're a woman and a man. That's crazy. I saw the wig. It doesn't do you justice. I'm so sorry. It's blonde. It doesn't do you justice. I thought that was my real mother, but that's you. And it's so amazing that you've gone that far to steal my inheritance. It's crazy. Out of jealousy, hate, it's amazing, but it makes perfect sense. I would have to be dead for you to be me, but I'm not, so your plan just failed. It went down like the Titanic. I'm so sorry. Here are some names that my name has been changed to. I'm Cerise Audrey Taylor, or am I? That's one, but in record, it's there twice, like there's a, there's two Cerise A. Taylors. There's a Cerise Taylor. There's a Cerise Wallace. There's a Cerise Andrew Taylor. And it's crazy, like obviously, there's platforms with this name, and this is how they're stealing my money, and they're being transferred to different accounts, and it's just amazing. Thank you, Lord, for being the truth and the life. The key to surviving tough times, first of all, they're inescapable. They're able to destroy or develop us, and they're survivable. I couldn't escape this. God chose me to shine a light on this injustice for a reason. Here I am. It's not destroying me. It's developing me. It's making me so much stronger. I used to be angry, but now it's just amazing, and I survived. Praise God. I survived. Every voodoo spell you sent, I survived. Here I stand, alive, in Jesus' name. Amen. We will find my inheritance. The longer it take you to give it to me, the...
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, and our deferred paper is 1409.
Bill 1409, Resolution Amending Resolution 547 of 2024, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Futures for professional services relating to leadership development training by increasing the authorized spend by $76,800 for services in 2025 for a new total cost not to exceed $338,136 over four years.
Motion to approve discussion?
With discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring, I think we had people from, I'm sorry, we had Patrick before. Would you like to come to the table? We've held this bill for a week. I talked to him on the phone yesterday. He said that he was summoned.
Requested, is how I'd say it.
I'm probably putting words in his mouth. All right, thanks, and let's just get the name and title thing out of the way.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Right, thanks. So originally, I held this bill for a week just to understand more about it. Obviously, been hearing about the opportunity for even council to take advantage of Pittsburgh Futures training. And so I asked for a one-pager. You produced it. Looks great, and would you want to go over some of the stats you sent over?
Yeah, sure. So I acknowledge that I sent a two-pager, so I'm sorry.
Two-pager?
It was a little bit longer than what you asked for. That's because Chris sent me a chart that I put in. I printed them out, too, in case you haven't looked at it. I can pass these through. So really, what I provided to council members, I'm going to pass that, please, sir. Thanks. Was just a brief summary, some of the things we'd already mentioned at the table. You know, originally, the administration's work with Pittsburgh Futures started as a grant opportunity in 2022. Since then, either myself or Director Pollock have been back at the table to extend it into '23, '24, and now kind of moving into another year of work. But the biggest thing that we have done with this is really change the mentality of employees in the frontline with respect to safety and problem solving. I'm sure you have heard a lot of directors in meetings with you always talking about the real-time safety system and people going up their support chain, and that really is a testament to the work we've done with the Pittsburgh Futures collaboration in figuring out how we take information and keep problems from happening again, because a lot of times repetition leads to the same injuries over and over and over again. It leads to the same inefficient use of tax dollars over and over again. So the big mindset here is, one, how do we actually respond to unsafe conditions? We don't want our employees to be unsafe or working in an unsafe environment ever if we can help it. So how do we help it? And then, two, how do we make sure that we learn from the situations we go through? And that really is kind of the crux of what this process is. And then, Chris, if you have anything you'd like to further add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the crux of the system is, you know, the frontline staff has the ability to signal to all levels of leadership.
Chris. I appreciate the, you know, the explanation, and I just want to hone in on a couple of things we talked about.
Yeah.
Because I think that's going to be more interesting for council to hear. I'm sorry. Not trying to take away your show, but can you just give real-world, specific examples of how you see this saving funds?
Oh, you know, absolutely. I mean, I think the first thing is, you know, it's providing care to our frontline employees when they do get injured, figuring out what went wrong in that situation.
Yeah, but like what? Like, they got the, they're picking up trash? What happened?
Yeah, so let's just use a recent example of snow and collecting trash, right? So historically, it's snowing, we have people out there collecting our trash, there are a lot of injuries and accidents that relate to that. So this year, we had tried to do some countermeasures to help protect those staffs and those trucks from getting hurt. So the first couple of snows, it turned out that those countermeasures, as we were getting our real-time information in, they weren't really being that effective. So those snows in December, we still had trucks getting into accidents. We still had people getting injured. So I worked with my leadership to figure out, okay, what can we do to keep these people safe as much as possible within their regular work? And so, you know, going back to those snows in January, we implemented those changes, and for a two-week, that two-week stretch when we had like five snows back-to-back at the rush hours, we didn't have a single accident or injury in environmental services related to snow and ice, which is really incredible, and I'm super proud of all of my team, but it takes all of us to do that work. That wouldn't happen without Pittsburgh Futures helping us set up the system. It wouldn't happen without them helping to train us to do that work initially, when we initially set that up in the summer of 2022. So they were available to us to provide guidance, help develop training, help answer questions, help give leadership a perspective on, you know, how we manage this work in a different way.
Chris, could you bring up the Chesterfield Street example? That's a great one.
Yeah, I mean, the Chesterfield Street example is another great one. So Chesterfield Street in Oakland, as you can imagine, like a lot of streets in Oakland, a lot of on-street parking, very tight, difficult for our environmental services folks to actually get there and collect trash from residents. So that got flagged in the real-time safety system. We actually went out, worked with Mobility and Infrastructure and PIT to help do outreach to those neighbors in Chesterfield Street, implement parking restrictions on collection day that worked for those residents, and happy to report, like, we haven't had neither an injury nor missed collection because there were too many cars and our people literally could not get to the garbage that was set at the curb. So that's working really well. That's the idea of something where we can take that concept as a way to work with residents, our workers, and everyone else to figure out, you know, how do we improve their level of service and keep everybody safe and their vehicles from being damaged? And, you know, but we're going in small steps. This isn't, you know, big, broad strokes. This is isolated, very specific interventions that we try to learn from, test with, and expand as necessary.
Thanks. So some of that stuff I heard, you know, sounds like no brainers, like if the, if the, if the trash is going to be picked up and the ice and the road is still covered in ice, they don't go down the road, they call?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
They call the salt truck.
So what we did was we...
They have a dispatch where they come immediately, something like that.
Yeah, we connected them with a salt truck that was in their area. We gave them the direct radio call sign, so the driver of the truck can literally reach out to a very specific human on the other end of the radio and say, "Hey, I need help here. That person is tasked to go and provide that support immediately." It's similar to what we do with public safety and emergency operations calls, but it's like giving them direct access to that resource, so the people that are driving and what they're experiencing, and they know that there's another person on the other end of the radio that's going to provide them assistance.
So this sounds like very common sense, but, you know, the training implemented something that would, you know, there's these acronyms, RTSS and the DART process that was implemented. Is that what solves certain situations like this? Like, help me understand, since it's a common sense thing that we would think, like, okay, we're not going to, you know?
Yeah.
People got injured in the past?
Right.
But there wasn't meetings that were set up about it? Like, what?
Correct.
Help me understand what's going on before 2022.
Yeah, so the real-time portion of it's really interesting, right? So the employee that gets injured or experiences harm is working directly with their supervisor to solve a problem. If they can't solve a problem, they escalate it to their supervisor, and it goes kind of all the way up their chain to me. Sometimes, like I just mentioned, I might reach out to DOMA if we think the solution might be something that they help with, or maybe it's IMP, or it could be PLI. It could be, we've kind of crossed the bridge in a lot of different instances. But the bottom line is, is that the real-time safety system is a system to share information, so we get that in real time. So when it happens, you know, usually within a day or two, ideally, I know about it, and I meet with my leadership team, superintendents, direct, assistant directors, deputy director, myself, every single day to go over every single incident to make sure that folks are trying to solve to root.
Great.
Yeah.
So this spending here, this is, what is it, $76,000 of 338?
Correct.
That's allocated for the whole, 338 is allocated for this whole year?
No, the $76,800 is just for this year, because this is an amendment to an existing contract. That's the prior, that's the total, including the original grant and '23 and '24.
Would this be the first that we're spending?
No.
All right, yeah, this is...
Since 2023, these funds have been pulled from OMB. In '24 and '25, they were explicitly budgeted.
So the past spending was spent on DPW and who else?
So there have been leadership trainings for all of the directors, and then more specialized trainings for DPW, PLI. Public Safety's next on the horizon. You know, the leaders have had it, and then it's kind of shifting it down to the frontline.
So you have more specialized training for, like, PLI? So do you have another one-pager on PLI?
I do not have information on PLI work right now, but I certainly can make sure Director Green is going to...
What was the other one? PLI and...
Public Safety. You know, again, the chiefs have all been through this training as well and understand it. It's just rolling it out to a larger group of people. Takes more time.
And then what funding would this go towards?
This funding with an OMB is really for the entire project across all departments. It's just housing OMB. That's where it's budgeted, but it's a citywide project.
So you're not looking to target a specific department this time?
No. This is really just ongoing maintenance, and where we can make more improvements, we will.
There'll be more training set up with DPW, PLI?
I know, you know, two weeks ago, PLI staff had real-time safety system training. We know that because there were a lot of kind of test incidents that were entered into the system. Poor Director Green seemed to be the person who was injured the most in those. But that staff is learning how to react when they're out in the field to use the system. So we're working it through with more and more individuals.
And this is funded previously, I know we put some real money prior, like you mentioned, and we voted on, but whenever it was funded by the Heinz and Dowens?
Correct.
Was there any effort to see if other foundations or that foundation was willing to continue to spend?
That, I do not know the answer to that question, what I can find out.
Obviously, everyone likes, you know, saving money, so it looks like, you know, if you can show that there is a decrease, although this isn't like some scientific study, you know, on, you know, but it sounds pretty reasonable that this is, you know, the reason why, you know, you implement these systems, and then now there's this decrease in workers' compensation? And we're, we don't, we self-insure ourselves, so we're paying, we're always the one that pays out?
Correct.
So it's not like we're paying, like, the premium and like some other insurers paying. We're always paying, like, those are our dollars.
Yes.
When you talk about going from eight million to three million?
Correct.
Those are our...
We have excess insurance for workers' compensation. If a particular claim surpasses an amount, most of them don't, but we are paying claims as they move through. So fewer claims to start with leads to savings in the budget in our years as we move through.
Okay, thanks, and thanks for getting back to me in a, you know, in this manner. So thanks. All right. Thanks, Director.
Is that a hand? Counselperson Sharland?
It was, it was a hand. I didn't...
Counselperson Sharland.
I was assuming that others had gone before me here. Thank you for being here. I fully understand the value of the Real-Time Safety Center. I've had a little bit of trouble explaining to constituents just how important it is. As stewards of tax dollars, we are saving money by keeping people safe, and we're also saving money by, we're saving money because we can keep people working, and then we don't have to pay for them when they're not working. And that has been a little bit of a challenge to explain in, like, community meetings when we hear things of like, "Well, back in the day, like, all the trash was picked up in a burlap sack," and, you know, "Public Works employees were a lot tougher than they are now," and it's like, "Yeah, but also, like, all of them were hurt, and we were paying for them there, and then we couldn't, you know, this is a better system." You don't need to sell me on that at all. What I am concerned about, though, with this Pittsburgh Futures grant, is we've talked a lot about the real-time safety aspects of this at the table. What else is coming out of this? What are the non-public works things? What are, what are the other elements of this grant that are actually improving our processes in all the other departments?
So a good example would be kind of the corollary to the real-time safety system is really just rapid problem solving, and it's, again, it's a changing of a mentality. I've done it with my teams in budget.
Could you...
Sure.
We, right, so... Concrete examples?
I have a problem, or a team member has a problem, they try to figure out how to solve it. They can't, right? And then it's, of course, who do you talk to? You, we know, you know, you go to your supervisor, but it's really about why does the problem exist? How do we, it's really collective thinking. How do we think about how we're solving this problem? So now everyone knows who their clear support chain is, and you know when you, you know, I don't want to just call Chris immediately. I want to try and work through it with the people on the frontline with me who are the experts, and then if we can't figure it out, we'll move one step up, and then move one step up. And eventually, if I need to move over to a different department and ask for ideas, it's really just breaking down the communication silos.
Can you give me more, more concrete examples of that?
Yes. So the Department of Innovation Performance Director Norman's team, you know, they are not always out on the frontline, so there won't be as many injuries, we hope, in this building in the office, but their managers still have huddles several times a week, and they discuss, "Okay, today we had this cybersecurity issue. What do we need to do to make sure that it's resolved, short-term, but that it doesn't happen again?" So it's really just using the training to change your mindset in a way that you're not just thinking about fixing what's right in front of you, but making sure that it's not going to happen again.
Is that something we were not able to do without this grant?
We were able to work through problems, but the idea of making sure that everyone has had the formal framework at the same time and understands it in the same way is the part that, that we don't want that to be haphazardly implemented. You know, so you need to have an entire team go through it to know what they need to do, because if you have one person who's not going to do it, then perhaps the whole thing just kind of falls apart.
It sounds interesting. It sounds like, you know, what you would go through in, you know, a master's program or, you know, administrative excellence training. I also have the question last time, and curious if we've got any clarity on this. Director Norman is on the board there. Is there some form of conflict of interest that has been signed in some way?
Yep. Included that in the memo yesterday that I sent out. She has disclosed that on her statement of financial interests. She's not receiving any compensation from this group. It's a volunteer board position. Pittsburgh Futures, the contract itself, she is not a signatory because it's routing through OMB, so there is no, no need for... Um, so there is no, no need for concern about that.
Right, uh, thank you.
Are there discussion? I do have, oh, sorry, Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, you know. I really appreciate this conversation because I think especially even just that example, right? Like of one street where there's a problem. And just for the public, I mean, I, I think people. Don't realize, I mean, of course, you know, you're in your moment, right? And you're whatever, like there's. Assault, you know, whether it's with snow or, or something with the city and um. It feels like it should be easy, right? It's like, God, why don't they just do this, right? But. Taking that one example, right, of, of that street, it's like, okay, there's a street. The problem is people parking on the street. We need to go, we need to talk to, because you can't just say no parking one day without talking to people. Because you know what I mean? Like they'd be upset about that. And, and this kind of stuff takes time. I know that's not necessarily related to this, but it is something. Um, that, you know. I, 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 I appreciate a lot more now that I am like in the city is how, you know, you, you, you can't just snap your fingers. And get an entire workforce to just do something immediately. It takes, it takes time to um. To kind of help people understand, you know, what the problem is, what, how, how we need to solve it. And then oftentimes get residents uh, buy in as well. Um, for this, I mean, these numbers are pretty uh. Impressive, uh, you know, looking at uh, you know, what I, I, I would call this process governance. That's sort of uh, uh, an I T term, you know, where you're, you. You need the data to analyze, you need to look at the process and look at the data. So that you can see the trends as opposed to just like chasing one, you know, if there's one incident that happens one time, that's. You know, we can't put all our resources towards, you know, but if it's something that's happened five times, you know, um, that's uh. Then that is a, a, a clear trend of a problem than something that can be addressed. Um, I, I always like to compare, you know, one. Example just of, of, of kind of coming together and looking at issues. In, in a more holistic way is, is of course the Vision Zero Task Force, right? But that, that's, you know, they've been working for, for a full year at this point, right? But that's something where we're looking at, okay. Let's look at the crashes, right? Let's see when there are, are major injuries and, and then come up with a way to kind of. A, a, a more standardized way to, to address those things. And it feels like that's what's happening here. Um, so uh, just. So, so, so just so I'm clear, so. Over the years, we basically, so we've reduced claims across the city by more than half?
Yeah, so between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four, that number um, of claims paid out as of the end of last year was. Five million dollars less. It's the number that I um, brought up last week.
Okay.
Uh, in paid city claims. Now the, there's another table, there's, there's two parts of workers' compensation. One is the claim for the injury itself. And then if something is ongoing, it kind of continues into future years. So the reserve aspect of it is. Um, what human resources thinks the, the actual payout over the lifetime of an injury would be. Um, so there's the immediate part and then again, the longer term and the idea is, um, you know, we're seeing reductions in both.
So, so we implemented this for the first time at, at the start of twenty twenty three or the end of twenty twenty two?
Uh, we started our work with Pittsburgh Futures in twenty twenty two.
Okay.
With leadership and honing in on public works in particular.
And that's where we saw the, the, the drop from eight million to three million, from eight million one to three million four?
Correct.
Was that first year?
Yes.
That's pretty significant. And that is for an eighty four thousand five hundred dollar per year price tag.
No, no. So those are the actual claims paid, right? So that, that, oh, sorry.
No, no, I meant for the system.
Of what we have paid for this project over the course of the four years, yes.
Is, is eighty four point five thousand per year? For a return?
Yes.
For a return of, of um. Four million six.
It, it's been pretty impressive. I mean, and some of it is also that, you know, we had higher trends with COVID, everything plummeted. And then kind of popped back up in twenty one. So from there, that's how we're kind of measuring. From the new normal.
And is this, is this um, is this system part of the IMP budget or is it like which, which budget?
It's budgeted within O M B, but it's really housed citywide.
Okay.
We go through, um, you know, directors, meetings every week, we go through major incidents and we're talking about it at a citywide level.
Okay.
Um, it's housed in O M B just because it does touch more than just one department with public works or just public safety.
And, and who, so is it IMP? So what, what is IMP's role in, in man, did they help set it up or did they?
Uh, they're directly involved because IMP has staffers who are honed in on process improvement.
Got it.
Uh, on a day to day basis, but that really just um, complements the work here.
Okay, okay. And then, and so now, just so I'm clear again, so we're talking about expanding this beyond DPW?
It's already been expanded beyond DPW.
Okay.
Um, we're just further implementing um, the processes to other departments. We have. And this just continues it for the, the fourth year of work.
Got it. And so, and so the system, just so I'm, so, you know, when I say like process, so it, does the system like a process governance? So it's not necessarily for safety, but it could be for other things? Or is it only for safety?
We have built our own sort of tracker is what we're, the Real Time Safety System is an internally built.
Okay.
Log of safety incidents. But there is, you know, the corresponding, you can use it for any problem that, that you're coming up with too. And I think, you know, for Vision Zero, I'm sure that they are using what they've all learned in their training as a way to, to make sure that there are solutions that work.
Okay, so, so um. Like, so our public safety could use, I mean, just, I mean, I guess um, my question is if there is a process in the city that we know isn't. The greatest, whatever that may be, right? Can we apply, can we say, okay, well, we've got this system, let's, let's, you know, look at. This regardless of what the issue is, whether it's a safety issue or whether it's just a timeliness issue or what?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And.
The tools are there.
The tools are there. Okay. And then, um, and then there's somebody at, in IMP who would kind of help guide that process for whatever department.
For the actual future changes, yes. IMP has resources to help people. Implement the solutions that they've come up with using, you know, what they've learned here.
Okay. That'll, that'll make sense to me. I think, thanks. And thank you, Councilman, for the, because asking for the one pager. I like that.
Like writing them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just had um, one question. Thanks for coming. Um, and I don't know if, if Chief Cornell Director Hornstein can um, answer this question. I, I was just curious sitting here, you know, wondering, is there, you know, particular, you know, types? Of injuries that, you know, this training and this process has been most effective at eliminating? Is there like certain kinds of claims? That, you know, uh, you know, that, that we would see more often. Um, you know, particularly looking at the snapshot of twenty twenty two and seeing this dramatic um, decrease in claims. Um, is there certain kind of severity of injuries or, or types of injuries and, and claims that have, you know, really? This has really been effective at eliminating.
You know, from DPW, is there a specific group?
Oh, um, I mean, that's a great question. I don't even, you know, to be honest, Councilman, I don't even really think about it that way. Um. I look at it as this is the particular safety incident. Um, and, you know, what do we need to do to solve the root? So I, I think one of the examples where council and budget has helped us solve the problem because we couldn't solve it ourselves was. Again, in Environmental Services, one of the early identifiers was. We had a rash of injuries that when we solved to root, really came down to. The truck is supposed to be staffed with three people, a driver, um, a loader and a co-driver. Or a driver and two loaders, um, depending on circumstance. We had a rash of injuries and accidents that were related to, there just simply were not enough people on the truck. Um, there were just two people on the truck. And so um, that person, the one person driving. Um, you know, the person working by themselves was compelled to maybe do more work. And so they were getting injured in a variety of different ways. But when we solved them all to root, it was a very common thing. We reached out to. O M B, we went through the budget process to request more additional staff. That happened in the twenty twenty three budget. Um, so I, I think that's like the more, the most clear cut example, but it's a wide gamut of. Um, classifications. I don't really look at it that way. I just more look at it from the perspective of what's this injury? Have we seen it before? Is there a common point? And um, you know, it's, it's all manner of, of reduction in both um. You know, that solution addressed not just injuries, but like say. Um, you know, vehicle accidents that were a result of like backing up because the driver only had one helper and they couldn't see the. There was nobody looking on the other side. And so they were trying to turn and maybe they hit. A parked car or something like that. It, it solved a variety of different situations.
We have um, you know, David Reed and Human Resources and the, the Safety Committee that meets monthly, they go over injuries every month. Um, so that data exists and I can, I can pull it for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I think all the questions I was going to ask have been answered. So. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Affirmative recommendation?
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us on to Bill fourteen ten.
Bill fourteen ten, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance. To enter into a license agreement with the Pittsburgh Steelers LLC. To allow for the use of the steel, of the city seal on official Steelers branded merchandise at zero cost to the city.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Warwick.
Oh, no, I was just going to say the, the discussion last week. I thought about it and it really interested me, like. Is there any way to re, to sort of get more out of the use of the seal?
They really look into it.
Can, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Kale Smith.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, I think other cities are doing this. I don't want us to delay this and make. This like such a major issue that we're not getting our seal on our Steelers jerseys. I mean, this is important to the city. It's important, it's, it's happening in twenty one other cities and no other council is doing what we're doing. We should be thankful that they want to be a part of the city, that they're doing great things in the city and that we're getting any money coming back to us in the city. Um, now I, if, I don't want to hold it up. If you want to have that conversation from now till next week. I think it's good to have that conversation, but I think at the end of the week, we, we put it up for final vote on Tuesday. I wouldn't want to delay it anymore is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Anything further from members? Councilmember um, Coghill.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to echo Councilwoman Kale Smith's thoughts. The Steelers are, you know, kind of, they got their hands full with everything. I don't want to hold this up. I don't even want them to think about it. We are getting some residuals from it, which I think is great and I think that's the norm. Thank you. If you look over, you know, the other cities that have hosted the draft. And I also uh, do not prefer to hold this up. And I hope any questions that members have could be answered within the next week before final vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger, I apologize, I'm trying to raise my hand off.
Apologies. Councilmember Gross.
I appreciate it. Sorry to butt in. I also um, just uh, you know, I. I worked with my staff over the last week and they made me a lot more comfortable with it as well. So um. I, I appreciate the willingness to hold last week, but um, I'm, I'm fully supportive today. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And I did want to also point to, it took me a minute to find it on last Friday. We got a forward from our city clerk from, um, originally from Cameron Crowe, who provided a little bit more information to all of us. The crest and apparel and hats and what it will actually look like. So. Uh, please find that in your email if you have further questions. Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen ten, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill fourteen thirty seven.
Bill fourteen thirty seven, resolution amending resolution three sixteen of two thousand twenty two. Which provided for an agreement or agreements with Center for Hearing and Deaf Services Inc. And Global Wardsmiths by increasing the authorized spend for Global Wardsmiths. By thirty eight thousand dollars for services in two thousand twenty five. For a new total cost not to exceed ninety eight thousand dollars over four years.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen thirty seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Affirmative recommendation, Bill thirteen, fourteen thirty eight.
Bill fourteen thirty eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of James Sheehan. Lorene O'Neil Sheehan and their attorneys Goodrich and Geist P C. For a single payment in two thousand twenty five in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars. In full and final settlement of litigation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just very briefly, uh, usually says that there was an executive, executive session held.
There was an executive session, no one attended. I was personally briefed.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen thirty eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Affirmative recommendation, Bill fourteen thirty nine.
Bill fourteen thirty nine, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Shivante Glover. And her attorneys Allegheny Law Group LLC. For a single payment in two thousand twenty five in an amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars. In full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen thirty nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill fourteen forty.
Bill fourteen forty, resolution further amending resolution number seven twenty three of two thousand twenty two. Effective December twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two as amended entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand twenty three capital budget, the two thousand twenty three community development program. And the two thousand twenty three through two thousand twenty eight capital improvement program. By increasing complete streets by two hundred twenty one thousand six hundred dollars. To account for additional federal highway administration funding being received by the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen forty, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill fourteen forty one.
Bill fourteen forty one, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of finance. To enter into an agreement or agreements with Maronte Contracting Incorporated. To provide access to city of Pittsburgh owned parcels twenty six E three oh one, twenty six E three oh two. Twenty six E three oh three, twenty six three, twenty six E three oh four and twenty six E three oh five. To support the replacement and rehabilitation of portions of the existing retaining wall. Supporting Ruthven Street above the Pittsburgh Regional Transit Martin Luther King Busway. And to replace various sewer infrastructure in the vicinity at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen forty one, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation on fourteen forty one. That moves us on to invoices. Do we have a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoices are approved. That takes us to P cards. Do we have a motion on P cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
New papers, Bill fourteen thirty three, resolution amending resolution one thirty four of two thousand twenty four. Which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety. To enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. To provide an ambassador program to assist police with non criminal matters in the central business district. By increasing the approved amount by one million two hundred thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed. Two million four hundred thousand dollars over four years.
Uh, motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
A discussion, Councilman Coghill.
No, I just wanted to comment, I, you know, I actually uh, walked around with the ambassadors last year and um. Yeah, really good, really good program, I think. And it's great to have eyes, you know, everywhere downtown like that. Really super nice people, the ones that I met. So I'm in support. That's, that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any further discussion, Councilwoman Kale Smith?
I just want to say the same thing. When it first came to us, I thought this is a. I just want to say the same thing. When it first came to us, I thought this is another ridiculous thing. But honest to goodness, I've watched them downtown and they do really good work and they really are out there helping people and doing things. I was actually surprised myself. So, I just want to say, um, I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin.
Uh, yes. So, I, I couldn't agree more. Uh, we work in my district very closely with the PDP and also with who the PDP contracts out with here. The concern that I do have about this, the, this was something, I mean, Block by Block, the company that, that runs these ambassadors, they, originally this was supposed to be something that the PDP took on as a, as something that wouldn't cost us anymore. Um, at the time when, when we were really concerned about the future of downtown, we really want, you know, everybody pitched in, but ultimately, I don't know how sustainable it is for us to be paying for a program for the PDP and, and why we're choosing to have this program downtown when all of us want this, you know, I, I want this in South Side. I, I know that Councilwoman Warwick brought up that she wanted this in, um, on Murray Avenue.
Grandview.
Grandview. So, I, I do think there's a discussion to be had about how we fund this perpetually and, and, you know, especially when we've got these bids that exist. Why, you know, at what point can we ask them to, to take this on? So, I just want to, you know, put that out there. I think this, this is a bigger discussion of these safety ambassadors and the work that they're doing. Um, and want to, you know, make sure that we're taking care of all the city here. So, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Warwick.
I don't know if there's someone.
Chief Frank and Director Schmidt are listed as.
Yeah, would you like to come up to speak to this? Yeah.
They wanted to say no, but okay. Since you're making a request.
Are we asking you, would you like to come up?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Run through the door.
So, oh, I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Morning, Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director for the City of Pittsburgh.
I'm Lisa Frank. I'm the chief operating, excuse me, and administrative officer for the City of Pittsburgh.
Yeah, thanks. So, um, what, do we know what the, is this the total cost of the program or is PDP also putting money into the program or?
Yeah, that, we are paying us a portion of it, but, um, most of it is funded through foundations and downtown businesses.
So, do, do we know what the whole, what the, what the, the total cost is? So, here it's six hundred thousand for the city per year?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I can, we can get that for you pretty quickly.
I mean, I just want to say that, again, and it would be helpful to know the, the total, right? But, um, if we have a situation where our local community group, well, I sort of consider the PDP like a, I mean, it's sort of on steroids, but it's like a, a very big community group, but you know, if our local community groups are pitching in and we're pitching in, I mean, it's important to look at the numbers, but, you know, what would it cost the city, for example, to, if, if we paid for the whole, it, it would be nice to know, right? Like, how much would it be if we were paying for the whole program? Or managing the program ourselves with employees and benefits and et cetera, et cetera, right? Versus having, is, is it better, who, who runs the program?
Block by block.
Block by block. Right, right, right.
Now, I will mention, um, we're in the process, we have four folks hired now, but we're in the process of hiring twelve public safety ambassadors um, that are based off of this program. The idea would be there'd be two per zone that would be able to go and focus on the high-traffic areas, high areas where folks, you know, visitors come like Grandview Avenue, East Carson Street, uh, Walnut Street. Yeah, wherever, um, that, but obviously twelve people, that's not a lot for the whole city. So, um, we're kind of going to use the, what we've learned with, in conjunction with the PDP to roll that out, um, to have folks out in a uniform, engage with the public, engage with the businesses to talk through public safety things. Um, as well as other, just city services, kind of to be our own ambassadors. Then, we're working, they're going to go through training with PDP's folks as well, probably use the same app at least initially as we develop, you know, something to make it so it would be citywide, as we start to explore all the different options.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's something, and I think also, because this is, this is a conversation, of course, I've been having with Zone Four extensively, right? But, you know, hiring, not hiring, but just having a law enforcement officer, it, it would be nice to have somebody who is able to do this work, who isn't necessarily like a highly trained officer, who's, you know, trained to deal with violent crime. But certainly in the Squirrel Hill Business District, right? I mean, one person half a day would be more than enough, I would think. I mean, just to walk the block and say hello and know, you know what I mean, know what's going on and be able to notify folks. So, yeah, I mean, I just with, with the, the intense scrutiny that has been on downtown over the past years, um, and, uh, this, and, and I, and I also have had experience with these folks. Sort of an odd incident, but, um.
They're great. Just let it go.
Yeah, they're great. They're great, really. Like, I, you know, um, uh, and also the one night that I was sort of engaging with these folks, one thing that I also noticed was what a good relationship the, um, the ambassadors have with the, with the, you know, whether it's like unhoused folks or folks who are kind of hanging out, like at night, you know what I mean? Like in Market Square or whatever, they really have a good, you know, like they, they trust, it is, it is a group of people that they trust, right? There's trust between those, um, those folks, so that, that is good. So, I, I think that I'm very appreciative that the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership pays anything at all for this, do you know what I mean? And that they're, that they're a partner in this. So, I'm glad that we are, that it's sort of like a, we're contributing as well. And I would like, it, it would be nice to know how much they're, they're contributing.
Sorry, I should, um, just have thought to brought that, but we have the prospectus and you can actually see what are people's wage rates and what are their wage rates if they're a lead and what if they're, and, and, um, you know, I would say the one thing that is kind of useful about having everybody together is they're, they're in the same union. So, they're, you know, sometimes it's just nice if all the people who are doing the same work don't have different wage rate, you know, they, it helps them to be a team, but I appreciate what you're saying. The only other thing that I want to say that, that goes to your point is, you know, we, we learned in, in addition to making the progress that we made downtown, which we did, and I think people here will pretty soon see the PDP's annual report, which shows, you know, just all kinds of dramatic changes, not only in what's happening, but how people who are downtown feel about what's happening. We, we learned how we did it at the same time, you know, what were the structures that we had to put together, how important it was to have the ambassadors talking to the Roots Team, talking to the, so, you know, the time to be thinking about this, I think, is really right, as we have also budgeted now to move the Roots Team into the different zones. And, you know, we're, we're in a position now to replicate that ju, just by ourselves with the city, uh, because we, we've really kind of learned how to do it, and I think that's really important.
And, and with the, um, so we're hiring positions. Is this, is there a, is there sort of a pipeline from the ambassador team to the?
Police? You can say something?
From the PDP ambassador?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they would be eligible to apply if they live in the city. Or went to move into the city. But, yeah, it's a similar focus. Uh, the other part we're trying to use from a, a public safety standpoint is to use the ambassador program as a pipeline to our longer-term careers. So, we're really, our recruitment is focused on, um, folks in that like eighteen to twenty space that are interested in a public safety career, maybe not quite sure or aren't old enough to enter the academy for police or fire, whatever it may be. It'll give them some experience with the general public, experience with our public safety, uh, providers. So then they can work through and determine a path that they want to go to. So, as you all know, we're, recruitment is a challenge for police and EMS, crossing guards, et cetera. So, our thought with this is to try to get those folks, now, get them engaged with the city and, and public safety to help them get on a longer-term career to become, you know, a more established position as well. I think we did have one, yeah, from PDP that moved into our police academy.
Okay, yeah, see, I, I like that too. I mean, just this idea that we're sort of creating this without all the, the formal hiring that we have to do at the city, we're sort of creating this pool and also just a, um, a way of interacting with the public that is based on like care and commit, you know, where this isn't, this isn't a law enforcement role, right? This is just a sort of, you know, in a community ambassador, like interacting with folks, and then that sort of being your first experience, and then having those folks, if they're interested, hopefully steered toward a, a longer-term career, a, a career, right? And so, I, I'm a big fan of this program. So, I, and I would, you know, I would also love to see it in, in Squirrel, I know, I know the businesses in this, in Squirrel Hill would love to have a, a regular person coming through, and it is something that we're working on with, with Zone Four, but it would be easier for Zone Four too, if there was a, a civilian person doing that, doing that work, and then just bringing them in when there's actually a law enforcement issue that needs to be, needs to be handled. So, anyway, that's enough, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further first round? Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to hear.
Or are you second round? I think you're second round, and then we'll go on to Councilperson Charlin.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have a round two.
Thank you. Well, can we take Councilwoman Gross first for first round? Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you all. Um, I, I am supportive also of the bill, and I'm glad to hear that there's positive feedback about the program and that it is involved with recruiting. But I just want to, um, note that Councilwoman Charlin, I think, has a good point. And, and for, for members of the public who don't realize that the PDP is not actually a community organization the way you think of it in your own neighborhood, it's one of the business improvement districts that we have granted the authority to levy additional property tax on the members. And I, I'm, the beauty of working, um, remotely today is that I'm looking at their uh, tax return, which is posted on the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership website. For two thousand twenty-two, they have nine million dollars in revenue. Um, not entire, parts of that is grants and sponsorships, but they also have a program income and the property value. Um, the bid assessment was at about two point four million. So, it, it's not like having your grassroots um, business district in your neighborhoods that maybe has a fundraiser once a year or tries to write some grants. This is a, a, aid, an organization that formed, um, with basically tax revenue, right? That's what business improvement districts are, to do this kind of programming. So, as long as we're, you know, we feel good about the outcomes that we're getting, I understand the financial participation, and I, I'm definitely supportive today. But, um, we should think about, um, you know, just keep eyes on it to make sure that we are getting, um, the return for our tax dollars as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm losing track of where we're, our first round's going, but we'll go to Councilman Coghill, Councilperson Charlin, and then Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
I might not have to talk after them.
Yeah. So, I'm glad to hear twelve new positions doing basically the same thing that we do downtown, but to be spread out through business districts throughout the city. Not exactly the B cop that myself and I know Councilwoman Warwick and others, but, but, but it could be just as well, you know, just have eyes on the street, stop and say hi to the businesses. And again, so far, the people that I've met involved with the Downtown Partnership have been, uh, just really nice people, engaging, um, you know, easy to get along with and just have us extra eyes in, in the, in the district. Now, the twelve new positions are going to be funded how?
It's actually in the general fund. It's in, so they're, um, they're in the police budget currently as community service aides. The, we're, after working with the union, uh, the FOP to ensure that we're not confusing police work with civilian work, we kind of work, rework some things, and now they're going to be public safety ambassadors. They're actually going to report to my assistant director, Tkeena White, my assistant director of operations, and she will kind of delegate their work. So, they'll be, be working closely with police, similar to what they do downtown. Like the, if you talk to the officers that work downtown, they know the public safety, or the PDP ambassadors as well. Um, they work closely together and, and the whole point of it is to make sure they're there to help refer businesses for, especially for quality of life issues. Um, as you, somebody mentioned, like, they know the homeless folks that are around. They know the, the business owners, they know the kids that kind of hang out. So, they're there to engage, and then they refer them to the different resources. So, it's not always a cop that has to show up. They can say, hey, we need the Roots Team here, or we need DHS to show up and, or Resolve, or somebody to talk through these things. So, we, they work closely with all of the public safety teams already, so putting them in public safety makes sense, and we're just going to roll that program out. Citywide through those twelve positions.
And obviously, like I saw downtown, they have a direct pipeline to the police. I mean, they, whether the commander downtown or the commander for wherever we, you know, relocate, wherever we locate the new ambassadors. I would just make sure that, I want to make sure that, uh, Brooklyn Boulevard gets that.
Included on the schedule.
Up there, you know, and I think to somebody, it's an easy part of town. I think if, uh, we just had one person pop in, let businesses know that we've got our eye on things. I'm so-and-so. Any problems, give me a call. Uh, I think it's fantastic. Um, they are not armed, any of them, correct?
No, they are in no way to replace or supply.
No, right.
Police officers. Uh, we still expect officers as available to wa, walk the beats or to, you know, ride. These will just be an extra set of eyes and ears that will bring feedback directly to my office on, on what's going on, so we can.
Even if they are licensed to carry, they are not permitted by us to be armed, correct? Okay, I think that's good policy.
Only our officers.
Right, right. Okay. That's it for me, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin.
Yes, thank you. Uh, a lot of things to, to talk about here. Um, as you all know, I'm kind of obsessed with the, the bid concept and the, the Neds. Uh, we, we don't have bids anymore, uh, in Pennsylvania, but, um, the, you know, I, I think most of the members know, last year, I, I'm, I went to the RHI conference. I'm very involved in the, RHI group. We were in Dallas, and Dallas had a very similar story to Pittsburgh after pan, the pandemic. An area like Deepellum, uh, which is very synonymous with East Carson Street. They have a very successful bid there. They were able to react much more nimbly, um, and were able to bring in essentially these safety ambassadors there. And, and also, um, they don't have the shortage of officers that we have. So, there was, they were able to bring in like off-duty officers to have them work for, you know, essentially for us would be like off-duty officers working for the PDP. I, you know, I, I do really support the idea of a bid. I think it can be more nimble and more flexible than government can. I think that's what it's supposed to do. It's not supposed to, um, it, it should never do the job of government. It should always be, um, an addition, a, a value add. And, you know, obviously, this is something that we're, we're looking at really closely in my district. We already have one in Oakland, um, and I know that Mayor Avonstall really pushed to have, um, bids throughout the city, however many years back, they all failed. The powers that be were much stronger than, than the mayor's office at that time. So, uh, you know, again, I think this is something that we need to, to all be looking at. We are so far behind the times in the bids that we have when you compare us to, to Philadelphia that has, you know, bids in the teens and, they all kind, kind of come in shapes and sizes. We are, we are so very lucky to have the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, especially in a time like post-pandemic where they were able to be more nimble than we are. Um, Aaron and Jeremy have been great friends to me, and, you know, Aaron is, uh, frankly, like a little bit of a mentorship role for me. He's someone that I, that I call, I look for a lot. That said, this program from Block by Block, which I'm, I'm very familiar with, Block by Block has a couple of different versions of their, their programming. I have like the most base level of street sweeping. Then there's also. I have like the most base level of street sweeping, then there's also the safety ambassadors, there's also homeless assistance that they do, and it is helpful for me to hear from them on how these programs are actually going. There's really varied success, the the safe and clean seems to be working really well. Safety ambassadors, they're, they're kind of figuring that out, the homeless services seems to to really not be working at all for the, for the Block by Block program from PDP. It, it is interesting, I think, that as we, we think through, like, what these services can entail, there are limitations to it, and it's nice that they try, and then we get to see, like, frankly, I'm, I know now that if I go to Block by Block, I'm not going to go for homeless services, there's, there's not a whole lot of value there. The, the safety, then maybe that's something we think about, but it, it also, like, it can't supplement what we're, what we need to be doing in the city. Our police force, and I'm very lucky, I've got, I, I believe I have the best commander in the city. And we've worked really hard to get directed patrols, his, his big goal for the year is to get more officers walking the beat. He's got data on what his number was last year, and we're doing a really good job of like, hey, it would be really nice on Warrington if we could just see an officer come through three days a week. Really nice in our senior centers, if you could just have an officer come through once a week, it would be nice to, you know, have the experience, and that is Abraham's goal. So in the same way that, like, we, we have these ambassadors, we can't supplement the role of officers there. Zone Three, five years ago, had 110 officers there, now we're looking at under 50. So we still need to, we still need to boost up our police force, we can't have this be the solution for not having directed patrols, not having officers on the beats, not having, you know, excited about the idea of officers on bikes, whatever it might be, we, this can't be a supplement for that. So I, I just, I think that needs to be said, and I think all of us need to be looking at bids, I think it's, it's a really exciting idea, but we've got to make sure we have the officers to do the job.
Yeah, I, I mean, I wouldn't disagree with you at all, we need this, the officers. We need to keep doing what we can for recruitment of those officers, put on as many classes as we can, and I think that's still the intent. At least that's my intent, to continue that work, to get more officers back on the streets. But I also think this, even when we had, you know, a thousand officers, I was around then, and I saw, I saw a need for this type of thing even then. Just because it's, it's nice to have an extra set of eyes and ears that's a little softer at times, or that can handle things like, you know, taking selfies, asking people, hey, what do you, why'd you come up to the block, what are you doing in, you know, in Squirrel Hill, what brought you to Squirrel Hill today, do you live here, no, you're visiting, you know? Those sorts of engagements are important for us to know, which is all based on what the PDP has done with the ambassador program. And I, I agree with you around, you know, the bids and other things, we've actually just had a meeting with some folks that live in Council Person Wilson's district around, they're trying to start one. I think it's a great way for them to provide extra services that the city can't, or maybe it's not even in our wheelhouse to provide, but supporting us, and it, PDP is a great example of a good partnership for that, just that, we've been very appreciative with Jeremy and his team to try some of these programs, so then, as you said, they're more nimble, right, they can hire somebody quicker, try it out, see if it's working, make some tweaks and changes, and then once we get sifted out a little better, we can then proceed with hiring our own to do a similar thing with, for areas that don't have that strength of a bid.
I, I know this is a little bit like my hobby horse, but, but I I also think it's been really helpful for everybody to have buy-in but work on one team, so I, you know, I know that I've said this before, but the PDP and our officers and our Roots and our mental health services and our Post and Lee and Aaron and every single Tuesday morning, and that means, you know, just for our, like, Tuesday morning check-in, and that means everybody can adjust everybody else's behavior, everybody is, is sharing, so like, I completely agree with you, an ambassador cannot do what an officer does and doesn't supplement that. Don't disagree with that at all, and I do think the fact that everybody's just got a little piece of the puzzle is what is helping us all work as one team, and, and for me, that really has been the secret sauce. It, it's been about the money, and it's been about the extra positions, but I think the way that we, when we really started to make progress was when we figured out how there is only one downtown team, there's not Jeremy's and then ours and then Roots's and then whatever, there's, there's one team, and, you know, and everybody can be honest, and so that's what I would like to see replicated, you know, in the South Side, that's what I would like to see replicated in Squirrel Hill, because that's actually what I think is working.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you. I just, I loved what you just said, but the only thing I would ask is that maybe you include council, like, maybe our Chairperson for Public Safety, that way, the message is coming back to us, and we're all communicating, and then we really are all on one page, I think that would be helpful. Because I, yeah, yeah. Hey, if you have him over here, you know, you'd be surprised how hard he'll root for you and fight for you on this side, if he knows what he's fighting for, so, he's really good at that. Actually irritates me a little bit sometimes. But I do love the idea of this training, the younger people to maybe get into the police department. You have to start somewhere, and I do understand that this can't be the be all and end all, but the police department and the number of police staffing is not just in terms of recruitment, and, and it's retention, and retention comes a lot with feeling valued as a police officer, you know, we've had this conversation before. And a lot of people say it's funding, it's this, and incentivizing becoming a police officer, it's really difficult and challenging to do that when we border so many boroughs that pay better, respect their officers, have better schools in some cases than some of, some of the things we have to offer locally. Not all, not all, some, some of our schools do pretty well, but we do have some challenges there. And so I think that that's a broader conversation, but this right now, I think, is a great program, I'd love to see it expanded. I love, I honestly, I'm telling you, I was a skeptic when I first heard of it, and actually watching and seeing what people do, and I would do a lot to help save downtown, because as goes downtown, so goes Pittsburgh. So I mean, I think it's worth making sure that we're doing whatever we can do to help downtown Pittsburgh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman, Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. Here's my only request, did we hire the twelve yet?
We have four of the twelve.
We have four of the twelve, they've not started yet.
They have.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, they're currently doing some rotation through with police, so they were at the Police Academy for a while. They're helping out in the property room right now. As we get, wait for their uniforms and, and to get more staffing.
So what I would like to request, always fearful my neighborhoods kind of get left behind, because when we talk about the South Side and, you know, North Side and Yeah, you do, I know.
You have your own patrol, please, don't boo hoo me, okay?
So I would like to request, whomever we appoint designated to my district, and I think particularly maybe Brownsville Road and Brookline Boulevard, that's just those two areas, right? That they call me, and we sit down and we talk about my neighborhood, and we can, I'll meet them up on the street, but I want to be engaged with my person, I want to make sure I have a person, number one, that's my main concern, and number two is I want to make sure that person knows my, and I will take that person around, I think it can be very effective, but, but I have issues in both those areas that just an extra set of eyes would go a long way, and hopefully that person's as engaging of the ones as engaging and as nice as the ones that I've met downtown, but, so, you can promise me that? The person will call me, that somebody assigned to my district, and we will sit down and talk about the two areas that I request.
Yeah, and I can, I can have Assistant Director White call you today to, to start that process.
Meet with him tomorrow if you do that, yeah, thanks. Oh, the other thing is, they're in vests, they're in fluorescent vests, is, what are their uniforms?
Well, our, so the ones we're hiring, we're, we just specked out the uniform, they're going to be in a bright, like a gold colored shirt, coat that says Public Safety Ambassador, they're going to be dressed slightly, we, we don't want people to confuse them with the PDP folks.
Well, and I agree with that, at the same time, I know when I walk down the street with my city shield, people think I'm a police officer, it gives the presence of a, you know, I don't act like one, of course, and I don't carry a firearm, but I, I, I'm not opposed to, you know, making them get, get black and gold and put the shield on them and let people think they're police, you know, even though they're not. I don't think it does any harm, I think people see it, and, you know, if somebody's doing
We can show you what their uniform.
Yeah, 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 I mean, just the fluorescent vest, I just, I, I feel like more appropriate, make them look more official.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll just say for my part, you know, on Friday, I left the Benedum, there was someone on the corner, I believe an ambassador, just saying, hope you enjoy the show, have a great night, and like, the stream of people coming out of the Benedum, don't know the percentage who are city residents versus outside the city residents, but like, just, yeah, imagining that times, however many nights, you know, throughout the year, when people are having their own experience, their great experience downtown, and then going back to where they live, a countervailing force to what they may be seeing on the hyperactive news, you know, telling everyone that downtown is a whatever it is, whatever they want to say about downtown that's negative, so that own experience is great. For our own officers, just wanted, I am assuming everything's copacetic with the police union, we're good to go in that regard?
Yeah, it is now, we sorted all that out.
Okay, okay, great, good. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1433, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, affirmative recommendation, thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Deferred Papers, Bill 1412, Resolution authorizing the taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh of certain easements necessary for the completion of temporary construction work for sidewalk construction and associated miscellaneous work for public transportation purposes through eminent domain and further authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto at an amount not to exceed $25,000 reimbursable at 80%.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I just want to thank Domi for holding this for a week so that I could understand it, it is just a temporary, even though it says eminent domain, it's more like a temporary easement, because we can't find, it was a non-responsive property owner, and we, it's necessary to finish construction work on Penn Avenue, I think it's Penn Avenue, yes. Come on the border of Councilman Mosley's district and my own, so I'm supportive and I, I appreciate them holding it for a week, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1412, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed?
Madam Chair, may I also register aye votes for the remaining bills?
Yes, so noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. 1412 receives affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 1442.
Bill 1442, Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the Sylvan Avenue multimodal path project, and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed $1,809,585, an increase of $277,000 from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Second discussion, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, Assistant Director come up, or Deputy Director.
Jeff Scallik, I'm the Deputy Director for Domi, how are you?
Yeah, so I just want to, and I, and I will admit, I've had Deputy Director explain this to me multiple times, and I still don't quite, you know, I prefer to have, but just a, just for my constituents, so, this is a project that the city applied for grant funding as part of the Mon Oakland Connector project many years ago, which was a project that, you know, my, my neighbors and myself fought and was ultimately canceled by Marigani. Yeah, really, have you heard of it? So, but throughout the process, right, and the sort of fight with the city around the Mon Oakland Connector, the community came up with a plan called Our Money, Our Solutions, right, and in that plan, one of the requests, right, was better bike pedestrian connection between Greenfield and Hazelwood. But at any rate, part of that Mon Oakland Connector project was to apply for a grant to do this multimodal project. But understandably, there was concern at the time, because it involves some sidewalk work in Hazelwood that seemed quite frankly unnecessary, given the other sidewalk issues in the community, specifically in the business district, right? But all of this was moving forward, and we got the grant, et cetera, so that was at the very beginning, you know, when I first took office. So now, here we are with grant money and, and, and creating this bike ped connection along the old Sylvan Avenue between Greenfield and Hazelwood, but there are still these concerns for the public around cost, right? Because, again, we, we do have serious sidewalk gaps in other places, so that's why I wanted to have Assistant Director Scallik and explain, and my understanding is that this is sort of moving money around that ultimately will cause, save on this project, even though it appears in the bill to be increasing the cost, so that's
So it's a great way of explaining it, at first, this was going to be 100% local funds, we're able to receive the grant, and now, when we receive this grant, it's going to be 80% federal, 20% local. So we're receiving $211,000 federal money, and then the rest will be local, so that's 66,000, I think. So, yeah, we were able to receive the grant, and then this money is going to be able to do additional street repair and also pave Sylvan. So we'll have a nice path and everything out there for everybody.
Okay, so just, just for clarification, we're not bringing in extra money to this project, right? This is a project that is grant funded.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, this is more to like, clean up the books, the, that we're receiving federal fund will be less local dollars out of it, 66,000 local compared, and 211 federal. We need to change that on there, like, you know, make sure people know it's federal money, that we're receiving federal money on this.
Right, right, okay, so that's just what I want to clarify for, for my constituents, but, you know, this project most definitely is a nice-to-have project that was started a long time ago. If I had had my choice, you know, if I had been on council back then, I would have, and, and, and actually, these grants around the Mon Oakland Connector, just for some context, are the reason that I, you know, requested that OMB start giving us those grant reports, right, so that we can see as council members, what are the grants that are being requested? You know what I mean, and can say, hey, that's, this is a priority or not, or, or whatever, so you know, a grant, you know, we applied for a grant, we got a grant, it, it was not, in my opinion, at the time, the most critical thing that we could have applied for a grant for, but we did get it, and so we're moving forward with the project, so that was not so much for all of you, but more for, for my constituents, just for some clarity, so. And if anyone else has a question.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilman Wilson, did you have a question?
Yes, I just had a question about the funding, I was trying to follow, I think I understand, I just want to, just make sure I understand, so so previously, there was funding for this?
It was a bigger
This bike path?
It was, correct, it was a bigger project. We don't have the bigger project anymore, we're just doing this portion of the project that was 100% local. We were able to use grant money to pay for this part of the project, so we kind of moved things around and received an additional dollars from PennDOT to finish Sylvan Avenue.
So there was funding?
100% local, yes.
Like, when you say 100% local, you mean there was like grant funding?
No, city dollars.
City dollars? And then now it's being grant funded?
Correct. We're able to, we received a grant for this portion.
Okay.
This was like the big
Before the funding before the, before the funding for this was coming out of our city coffers?
Correct.
For Sylvan Avenue?
Correct.
Okay.
The whole thing.
You can talk, man, or maybe, I don't know.
Derogatory.
Yeah, for the whole Mon Oakland Connect, right, like, it was like, it was a big project that the city was
Oh, I remember, yeah, I just couldn't remember.
And this was
It wasn't my, it's not my area, so I didn't know what was grants, what wasn't. But there wasn't a grant previous, now we have a grant, okay. Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen forty-two, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Affirmative recommendation? Bill fourteen forty-three.
Bill fourteen forty-three, resolution and agreement amending resolution number one seventy-two of twenty twenty, allowing for compensation paid to PennDOT of the local costs associated with the East Carson Street Supplemental Improvement Project being undertaken by PennDOT and further providing for payment of the costs thereof not to exceed nine hundred forty-two thousand one dollar and eleven cents and increase of fifty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents from the previously executed agreement.
Uh, motion to approve?
Discussion, please.
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think this is to shore up some money.
Yep, this is the project that was done years ago with PennDOT. This is more to balance the books and finish paying PennDOT their, their money.
Okay, that's what I thought was, thank you. Yeah.
Thanks. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen forty-three, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you very much. Uh, that moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Deferred Papers, Bill seven forty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Aubrey for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the home ARP program for a total not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I um just wanted to say that I know we've been holding this bill, but been in communication with um our um, you know, Kelly from the, I'm drawing a blank, the, you know, our grant office, um, what's the grant office called?
Our home ARP representative, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's ultimately OMB um that oversees Kelly's work. But there was, there was a discrepancy, if everyone recalls, uh, between the um, the use of the property. These are, you know, funds, home R per dollars that we have. And uh basically, there's been a request uh for an additional four-week hold on the Aubrey bill because they're continuing to refine this substantial amendment process. The DHS is finalizing responses on the coordinated entry process and has provided data on the Aubrey Hotel overflow program. So HUD funds uh for Fair Housing Office has indicated no apparent concerns with the proposed preference for homeless families, but further refinements are needed. And so they're aiming to draft an amendment um to HUD before the city and Allegheny County can submit the final version. I just figured I'd state that since it's been going on for some time. So uh if there's uh no further comment, I'd like to re- request a four-week hold.
We have a second?
Second.
Second?
With discussion? Councilman, Councilperson Charland?
Real briefly, this is uh, you know, in my district, uh, Councilman Wilson and I've talked about this a while. Um, I know Julia from WSA is going to ask me about this later. Just want, just want to say that, that the information that we have is, is the information that, that Councilwoman Wilson said there. So um, you can, you can let Mr. Potter know that you did your due diligence. Thank you.
Well, you're assuming Mr. Potter does his due diligence.
Any further discussion on the motion for a four-week hold? Seeing none, all those in favor of a four-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Seven forty-nine will be held for four weeks. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kale Smith.
New Papers, Bill fourteen thirty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreements with America Two Fifty PA for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the semi quintessential grant in, quintessential grant in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for city's Independence Day celebration.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Second.
Discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen thirty-six, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Bill fourteen thirty-six receives preliminary approval. Um, that moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
New Papers, Bill fourteen thirty-four, resolution amending resolution six forty-nine of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Foster and Foster Consulting Actuaries, Inc. for municipal pension contribution data system by increasing the approved amount by three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars over five years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen thirty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? That moves us on to a final committee, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs chaired by Councilman Mosley.
New Papers, Bill fourteen thirty-five, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for nine thirty-eight and nine forty Penn Avenue, Pittsburgh one five two two two, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen thirty-five, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Having exhausted the business of our meeting, we do have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at one thirty PM, council will hold a cable cast public hearing relative to Bill thirteen oh three, relative to zoning in North Oakland neighborhood and Bill thirteen forty-three relative to Central Catholics Institutional Master Plan. Speaker registration has closed. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, February eleventh and standing committees meeting on Wednesday, February twelfth, both at ten AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline and you may also call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. I do have a note here as well, um, Councilwoman Kale Smith, you had motion for a post agenda on snow removal. Um, and I don't believe we actually formally voted on it. So we just need a, I think, a motion and a second and a formal vote.
Motion um for a cable cast post agenda regarding snow removal in the City of Pittsburgh.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. We will uh hold this for a public uh post agenda.